Community is everything. We're proud to support ours. Through partnerships with fellow community leaders and organizations, we're helping our neighbors access essential resources and services so we can all thrive. Learn more at vva.com/community.
If I could first just ask for a round of applause for the chamber staff for putting on an amazing conference. I love the setup this year that we have a separate area. I think you all appreciate it as well. And I would ask that, Charity, good morning, my man. If Freddie, if you guys want to chat with each other, take it on the other side of the wall, please, so you can hear what these folks have to say up here.
Take your conversations outside, please. Take your conversations outside. Thank you. Love you.
This is kind of monumental. Dennis Archer Jr. and Coleman are sitting here. Y'all better get a picture. I guess, you know, we're not going to go through introductions at the outset because we've got 29 minutes and counting. And I want to give our fabulous council members an opportunity to share their thoughts on the subject matter today. Out of respect for position, I'll start with our council president, Mary Sheffield. Yeah, please, a round of applause. Her and I have this thing going, you know, where we say, you can run, but what?
You can run, but you can't hide.
There you go. It's a little private joke we have with each other. Mary, as council president, you represent a district, but you're also president of the body. What are you most excited about for 2024, for the city of Detroit?
Wow, so much. So I think last term, we passed some major legislation that I truly believe could benefit the residents in the city of Detroit. And so 2024, for me, I'm really going into implementation mode, how we oversee and make sure that these programs actually are implemented correctly. For example, we passed historic legislation like property tax reform, which, yes, thank you, property tax reform, which really manages and oversees the way that property taxes are assessed and makes it user-friendly for the residents to understand how to check and verify if they believe that their property has been over-assessed, whether it's right to counsel that ensures that there's free legal counsel for people who are facing evictions, or some of the other ordinances that we've passed now, really making sure that those programs are actually being implemented. We also have the 2024 draft coming, right? So there's going to be a lot of momentum in the city of Detroit, a lot of opportunity for us to bring in revenue to the city of Detroit. And so I know the theme of the conference today really has been about how do we attract and retain the population here in the city of Detroit. And I think 2024, a lot of the programs and ordinances that we have passed to date can really help in the retaining of long-term generational Detroiters here in the city of Detroit. And then lastly, I want to mention, we have major projects that are forthcoming in the pipeline. We have Henry Ford, which is coming before council now, and then we also have the water, I think it's the Water Square project. So we have big transformative projects that can hire Detroiters, drive our economy, drive our growth that are coming before council, that we can also advocate for equity and benefits for Detroiters in the long run. So I think it's just a lot happening. We have elections that are coming in Detroit. 2024 is an exciting and big year for the city of Detroit, and I really believe that we, as a council, with our collective work, can really make sure that we're elevating the voices of those that we represent and make sure that generational Detroiters are benefiting from it.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you. Please. To each of you all, we'll come to you last, Coleman, but we'll start with Gabriella. But for each of you all that represent a district, the theme today is quite simply growing Michigan. You've read the reports, you've seen all the news stories. We've got a lot of work to do in a lot of different categories. But starting with you, why don't you just, so for the folks in the audience that may not know, talk about the geographical boundaries of your district first, and then talk about how you're contributing and what you're most excited about in your district from population growth, both as it relates to residential growth and business and investment.
Thank you for the question. Good afternoon, everyone. Very happy to be here. When people think of District 6, they think of southwest Detroit. And yes, it includes southwest Detroit, but we are so much more than that. We are currently in District 6. It represents a big portion of downtown, Midtown, Cork, Corktown, Core City, southwest Detroit over in the 42 area, which is where I grew up, and 4217. And for me, what's exciting about 2024 and for the city moving forward are the opportunities that we have. And as a social worker and community organizer, I want to make sure that what we're investing in and what we're doing is sustained and that it's more than just pretty sand castles that can be taken away if it's not there. So I want to make sure that as we're building new hotels, as we're building new and exciting hospitals, that we're also including housing, that we're also including transportation to bring folks in and around the city, that we're also including Detroiters in those job opportunities, in the new opportunities that are coming into the city. So it's about making sure that we are meeting the needs of our current residents and people that want to move here, to make sure that we have solid ground to stand on to grow. We need that, and I'm really excited to be able to do that work this year.
Let me stick with you for a second because you've got a lot of unique things going on in your district. And if you look at both retail and residential rental rates, for instance, they look like Brooklyn, they look like San Francisco, and in many of those instances in those communities, traditional citizens who have been there for decades have been priced out. And so you have the significant forward investment, you have condo developments that are selling for several hundred thousand dollars, you have significant retail improvement. What are you doing to ensure that, you know, your core residents who have been committed to those neighborhoods are able to stay and the businesses don't get priced out?
Absolutely. That's a very important issue that we need to all address. We need to make sure that all of us are advocating for affordable housing, affordable retail. When we talk about the new opportunities coming to downtown, we want to make sure that black and brown businesses, women entrepreneurs are able to afford that storefronts. Learning about how much abatements and tax incentives are needed, I would love for there to be a culture and a practice around giving those to smaller developers that want to be a part of the growth, that want to be a part of the city's next chapter. And as a council member, I am constantly mentioning that to every developer that I'm talking to. How are we going to make sure that you are setting aside a 20%, 30%, 40% affordability for my residents that are making 30% to 50% to 60% AMI? We are seeing right now that $100,000 is the new middle class. That is terrifying when so many of our residents are still at the poverty level. So for us, it's about utilizing the resources and tools that we have. If we're going to invest in these new exciting developments, how can we make sure that a portion of this is being offered to Detroiters to be a part of these opportunities?
It's fantastic. Thank you. Letitia, tell us the geographical boundaries of your district and what are you doing to increase job growth, attract businesses and residents?
So thank you for the question. Good afternoon, everyone. I represent District 4, the far east side of the city of Detroit, so we bounder.
East side?
Oh, I love that. I love that. Thank y'all. So we bounder Harper Woods Gross Point. We go to the water in Jefferson-Chalmers. We abut District 3 near the Grashit and Seven Mile area, and then we abut District 5 on the west side near, I'll just say Cadillac, Cadillac and East Warren. And so if any of you have been listening, watching what's happening here locally, you all know that we're going through a redistricting process. The east side did not fare so well as it relates to population in the previous decade. District 4 had the greatest loss in population. We lost 20% of our population. At the same time, District 4 has the greatest amount of vacant land. And so I think the two correlate. It's easy to identify that. And so now I recognize that we have a tremendous amount of opportunity for development. The question is, what does that development look like? The question is, who are we developing for? And I am a firm believer that we have to develop for everyone, everyone who currently lives in the city of Detroit and those that are interested in coming to the city of Detroit. So I'm always about balance, making sure that we provide opportunities for the lower-income families, for middle-income families, and even upper-income families that are interested in coming into the district. I indicated that we bounder Gross Point, and we're starting to see some encroachment, if you will, of Gross Point developers coming into District 4. Not opposed to it, but just want to ensure that our residents are involved in the process, that everyone is sure of what it is that the community is interested in seeing as we grow in the district. So population is extremely important. District 4, I believe, is the district that benefits from the most strategic neighborhoods than any other district. We have Jefferson and Chalmers, we have East Warren, Cadu, I see Blue Cross Blue Shield here. Thank you so much for your support. Penske helped in the Jefferson-Chalmers area, and then we have Fifth Third that has done work at the Grashit Seven corridor, both in District 3 and in District 4. And so it's vitally important for us to continue to develop our neighborhood commercial so that we have opportunities for residents to have access to jobs in the community. If there's a problem with transportation, if you can walk to a job, then it's going to be more beneficial for you. If you don't have to pay for transportation, then we don't need you to pay for additional expenses when you can walk to a job in the neighborhood. And so I think neighborhood commercial is extremely important for all of our neighborhoods, and that's one of the things that I'm focused on this year. This year, we are looking to hold a developer summit in the district to attract developers so that they know and understand the amount of land that we have in the district and to also connect them with the city of Detroit, the various departments that can help to pull development projects together.
I'm glad to hear that you're being proactive, yes, please, in that regard, because what will happen is, you see it all over the country, is that in, I will say, our neighborhoods, you will look up, and it won't be our neighborhoods, and then we'll be priced out, and we will not have participated. And so the developer summit is a great idea. You got Kai and Charity in the front row here. I would stick close to them because I'm sure they've got a number of members of their organization who'd be interested in investing in your neighborhood. So good luck, and let me know when that developer roundtable is.
I certainly will. Thank you.
Scotty, you've got an interesting perspective because you worked in, you know, prior to the significant investment and focus in Corktown, you were in Midtown in terms of your profession before council. So you knew firsthand, and you saw firsthand, how that neighborhood has evolved. Now you are representing a neighborhood less affluent, without as much attention. What are you doing in your area to attract residential growth and business investment?
Dennis, that's a great question, and thank you for that. And so even prior to working at Midtown, I also worked on the Lower East Side and helped bring prosperity and development to that area as well, to a very under-resourced and under-invested in area. And we still see that 80,000 square foot shopping center and job crater at that area now, which was a community prioritized development at Mack and Alter, which still stands today. And so very proud of that and the ability to do that in the third district. And so for me, I've always talked about jobs, jobs, jobs. That is critical and something that we did not focus on in our neighborhoods for the longest period of time. So what you saw last year, we established something called the Wealth Generation Task Force, and we provided a report that talks about how do we move our low-income black and brown families out of poverty into the middle class, retain our middle class, and then make Detroit a place where we can attract our wealthy and middle-class families back to the city of Detroit. And that is something specifically that can be done by the legislative body. And so what you've seen in Detroit, we've seen Flexing Gate. You've also seen Lear move into the district. You've seen new housing when it comes to affordability, where people want to stay in our district and live near home. You've seen housing prices increase in areas such as Bangla Town, in Regent Park, in areas of that nature as well. And that is very specific to making sure that families have what they need, that we're ensuring that recreation is being properly invested in. And so when you see in Bangla Town, you now see cricket pitches. We have two of the best cricket pitches in the state of Michigan, and that's a direct ask from our Bengali community. When you see the Farwell Recreation Center, we now have a gymnasium under construction now, that's a direct result of the community asking for that. When you see the focus on the pool at Hellman Recreation Center, we only have four pools in the city of Detroit, and the Northeast Side has one of them. In fact, the Northeast Side has four recreation centers. And when you talk about people, why they want to stay in the city, why young families would be here, recreation is a huge component, and you're seeing the level of investment that our residents need despite income. Because when people talk about Detroit, we know we have a dearth of low-income families, but low income does not mean low quality. And so what we do is, we ensure.
Say it again. Say it again.
Low income does not mean low quality.
There you go.
And so what we do is, we ensure that we're making those type of investments in our residents, in our families, and we're creating an environment where people want to stay. And I just want to give a shout out. How many people here today, and I see a number of you, who are part of our Wealth Generation Task Force? Don't be shy. Don't be shy. You can raise your hand high. Don't be shy. There we go. And so they're out here, and they're the ones who put in the volunteer time, sweat, and personal equity to make sure that we're putting forth policies, and we have other partners who have committed to funding, and we have our first program, the Asset Protection Program, to ensure that our families that have issues with tangle title, issues with probate, will now have the ability to get the resources that they need if the grandchildren live in grandma's house, but the deed was never transferred over, and they're now having problems getting loans or getting resources, relief from the city of Detroit. We're making sure that's going to happen. We're partnering with a foundation, we're partnering with a number of, with labor, with business sector, with the education sector, to make sure that the Asset Protection Plan, the city has adopted this. And we just hired the director who comes online in mid-February to ensure that we can take, to lay out this new program, to provide these new services to our residents, which is so needed. And that's part of what we're doing in the third district, to make sure that we're bringing resources and uplifting the quality of life in the third district. And I hope I answered your question, Dennis.
You did, twice. Yeah, Farwell, I'm glad to hear about the gymnasium there. I grew up every weekend there on those tennis courts when I was in high school.
Dennis, I just got to say, we put in six new tennis courts there, the 24, because they have fallen to a great level of disrepair. And our tennis clubs asked for it, we fought for that, got it done. And so now you have six tennis courts that are usable and being used regularly in the third district.
Thank you. Mary, you are, it's similar to Gabriella in that you got the other half of downtown, very, very significant investment in development. As you go further east, it lessens, you've got more neighborhoods, and so we're going to come back to, we're coming back to at-large. You don't have a district. We go in district first. Relax, brother. So I got you, I got you. So talk about, really, you know, the diversity of your constituency in your district, and then, you know, within that diversity, what we're doing to attract and grow population and business investment.
Yes, so as you mentioned, I've had the privilege to represent a portion of the downtown area where we've seen significant investments come to the city of Detroit, but primarily the needs of Detroiters through some of the more low-income areas of the city are primarily the same. And so I've just been very consistent in just making sure that we elevate those issues when major projects do come to the city of Detroit and making sure that they respond to those needs by addressing the issue of affordability. You know, I was actually the councilperson in 2013 that made it a mandate that all new residential development that comes to Detroit, that they set aside a portion of that for low-income housing. I know that there's a conversation now about how we actually define what affordable housing is, and I'm looking forward to those conversations, but just making sure that we're driving the conversation of every day Detroiters and making sure that those issues are elevated. I did want to mention one thing about jobs, though, because as we talk about and we see the amount of investment that is coming to Detroit, you would think that we would be at a point where we're really lifting and elevating people out of poverty. And there was a University of Michigan study that was done during our last revenue estimating conference that said that of all of the full-time employees in Detroit, roughly 49% of those individuals earn below a living wage. That's almost half of Detroiters right now that are working full-time, making less than a living wage. And so it's not just about jobs, it's about what types of jobs, the quality of the jobs, are they sustainable, and are they the types of jobs where people will want to live here, raise a family, and can raise a family, and actually be able to raise themselves up the economic ladder as well? So that is important to me as well, too. But the diversity of my district has been great to be able to represent both and also try to mix the two together. You know, I'm a strong believer that mixed-income communities are stronger communities. And so as we have developed some of the areas of downtown, making sure that we're pulling in that 20% or 30% of area median income of all incomes in those development has also been able to make some of our downtown and our more developed areas more diverse as well, too. So, yeah.
Thank you. Coleman, Alexander.
My man.
The floor is yours.
Well, thank you so much, sir. Always a pleasure to be with you. Look at a lot of new money. My man, my man. There's a couple things that I think that are vital. And first, I want to thank everybody in this room. I think we're all talking about the same thing in terms of affordable housing. I think for me, what sticks out is that District Detroit, from I understand across the country, is one of the few projects that actually is having affordable living in a luxury condo high-rise of 20%. And I think that's something that is really going to impact a lot of people in the city of Detroit, that no matter where you are, we are going to have affordable housing, accessible housing. I think that's something that's necessary. I also think that when we're talking about investing in transit, there's also something called transit-oriented development, which includes housing as well. I think the Henry Ford project is also including affordable housing as well for citizens. So I think not only are we creating the jobs that the council president so eloquently talked about, and Councilman Benson so eloquently talked about, but we're also providing people a place to live as well. Because right now, we have a housing shortage. And I think it's critical that when we have these jobs, we also talk about the small business community as well. I think we need to make it easier for small businesses to be able to start up. I think we need to reduce regulations for small businesses to be able to start up. And I think through the land value tax, we'll be able to reduce taxes on small businesses because we pay the highest taxes residentially in the country. And so I think these are the things that we have to do. And the reason why that's important is because our small businesses are the first places where people get that first job. They get that first paycheck. They can put ruse over their head and clothes on their kids' backs and shoes on their feet. Because we all know those people that are making life decisions every time they get to the gas station. Am I going to pay this gas? Or are my kids going to have lights in the house today? Am I going to pay my rent? Or am I going to be able to feed myself and my family? These are life decisions that people are making. And it's the small business community, through jobs and opportunities and investments, that are making those decisions a little bit easier. And that's what I want to do, if anything, being within government, is to make those decisions a little bit easier and to do for those who can't do for themselves. And so I look forward in the future to working with everyone in 2024. I think we're going to have a very prosperous 2024. I also just wanted to say this really quickly as well. I think the fact that we've been able to have the lowest murder rates in 20 years, I think is a big deal. I think the fact that we have the lowest unemployment rates in 20 years is a big deal. That's thanks to the investment of a lot of jobs and opportunities. I know John Perkins is here. I think vested in the trades is something that's extremely important, because most of the jobs in the city of Detroit are blue-collar jobs. And so we even know we're talking about investing in downtown. A lot of those jobs are Detroiters that are being trained at this facility that's here for those jobs. And so I think it's important with President Sheffield, when she was talking about making sure that we have inclusion of Detroiters in those jobs and opportunities, because that's going to be where we need to put people to work. That's going to be the difference maker right there. You know, it's like that old saying, no job, I rob. And so I think for us to make these type of investments downtown is important, but the connection is, it doesn't matter where we're making investments, as long as Detroiters are getting those jobs, as long as Detroiters are at the helm, I think we're going to have a prosperous and vital city.
I want to pivot for a second. We've got about five or six minutes left, and talk about leadership. I look across the room, and there are a number of young, talented professionals and entrepreneurs who may or may not be considering some sort of public office, school board, maybe at some point, sitting up here on this panel. You know, increasingly, year over year, in my opinion, it becomes less and less appetizing. You give up time with your family, you definitely give up income opportunities, you get beat up in the press. So I first have to take my hat off to each of you for choosing public service. Talk to us briefly, it doesn't matter who chimes in first, we got four minutes left, but if you could keep it brief, if you were to inspire folks in the audience to consider some level of public service, how would you go about doing it? What would you say to this audience? Gabriella, you're nodding your head, you can go first.
Sure, thank you. So briefly, I am newly elected, like many of my colleagues. I am currently the youngest person on council. I was 29 when I got elected. Remember Sheffield takes the title for the youngest ever elected, but this year, I came in as the youngest on board, and it is hard. There's a lot of sacrifices. You think dating is hard now? Just imagine if you're an elected official. If you think what you're making now is not enough in your corporate job, try to be in public office. This is right. And I have colleagues, friends at the state level who should be getting way more than the 70K number that they're getting right now. That's not encouraging, right? I'm sorry. So to be encouraging.
Yeah, that was the question.
I would say, what I would say, though, is this. As someone that wants to encourage young people to run for office, there is a way to do this, and you should find balance. So my first two years, I completely burnt myself out, thought that is not sustainable. But today, I'm here after a well-rested holiday break, after investing in myself and my time, ready to do the work, and I know for a fact that I don't have to do this forever, and that's exciting to me. It's exciting because I know that I can invest in the next leader. So anyone else that wants to run for city council in two, three, four terms, who knows how much I'm going to be given by God and by my residents to be here, but I know that I'm excited to invest in the next leader, to be able to show them how to find balance, to be able to show them how to still have a life, so take care of yourself, your family, your friends, and do your job well. So what I will share as words of encouragement is I'm trying my best to learn how to do this well so that I can show other people that we can do this, because this should be attractive. We need brilliant people that are hungry, ready to do the work, and we should make this a fun, safe place for you to be able to do so.
Mary, you are going to jump in, I think, at the same time. So what do you think? How do we get these people to be interested?
So, you know, I think service is definitely a calling, and I believe that we've all, in some capacity, have been called to serve. Service, I believe, is the rent that we pay for the space that we occupy, and there's a lot of different ways to serve. It doesn't need a title or a position, and leadership doesn't need that either. But I think that we all have something deep within us that we're passionate about. There's issues that resonate with us, there's things that get us energized and motivated, and there are some things that upset us. And when you align with those issues and you figure out what platform or what capacity is the best way to serve, then you follow that dream. And I think as women who are looking to get into office, there's studies after studies that show that we second-guess ourselves more often than men. We think that we're not qualified, or we, you know, the age, I dealt with that as a young woman going into politics, but done is better than perfect. I always say that, all right? And just follow, follow your gift, right? Follow your gift, and we need more young people in office. When we look at what's happening on the congressional level and not having people lined up, at some point, you just have to step in and do it, right? Whether you're ready or not, and as you go through that process, you will grow, learn, and adapt. So we got to get young people in. If public office is something that you're interested in, again, it doesn't have to be that space, but we do need good young people in office. But follow what the gift is, what you're passionate about, and what the issues are, how you align with that, and what capacity to serve. Because outside of just council, there's boards, commissions, there's so many other ways, Board of Education, like you mentioned, where people can lend their expertise and their service to.
Very well said.
Dennis, I just want to add to that one. And so if you want a way to encourage people to do this, is to ensure that they understand that you have the ability to be a decision-maker, to deploy resources throughout the city of Detroit. There are very few jobs where you can have a direct impact on the quality of life of 600,000-plus residents by a vote that you make, by policy that you advocate for, and by policy that you help implement. You get to deploy over a $1.3 billion general fund throughout the city of Detroit, plus grants and other resources that come into the city of Detroit. The members on this podium or on this stand now. The members at, on this podium or that's on this stand now, we deploy over $1.3 billion with the resources. We oversee the budget, the contracts, and the policies. If you were a board member at a corporation with the same span of control, how, how much money do you think that you would make? And what kind of impact do you think that you would have? Now just think about that when you look at the members of Detroit City Council, $1.3 billion, the resources that we deploy. And if you want to make a difference in somebody's life, think about becoming elected official. Detroit City Council, that's what we do, and it's what you can do. So hopefully that will encourage people to think about public service and what you can do in the quality of somebody's life.
Thank you, Scotty. Letitia?
I, I just want to add, so remember Benson said everything I was going to say, but, um, when you, we all know that there are things that we'd like to see improved, that we'd like to see changed, right? And so when you think about elected office, I haven't figured out the balance yet myself, but think about making systemic change for your neighbors, for your family, and then you will say, you know what? I'll give it a go. You don't have to stay here forever. That's not the goal. The goal is to make systemic change that improves the lives of your friends, your family, your neighbors, yourself.
My brother. Close it out.
My main man. I thank you for the honor. Um, I think the first thing you have to do is find that burning why. Why are you doing this? If you are doing this because you're sick and tired of that person going from job to job to job and not being able to receive it, you should run. If you want to help that person and runs out of money before they run out a month, you should run. If you know about the small business owner that's leveraged their house, that's literally in debt, that sold everything they had just to be able to survive during the pandemic, you should run. I also think that we should use everybody in this room as an example. Lord knows what you've had to sacrifice and go through just to survive during the global pandemic. And so I think it is that type of inspiration of people who are willing to sacrifice capital, who are willing to sacrifice themselves, who are willing to put everything on the line. If you want to help them, if you like that great quote says, "You want more for people than you want from them," you should run. So you got to find that burning why. If you want to leave a situation better than when you found it. If you just want to help those people who are underpaid, underworked, underappreciated, overlooked, overburned, y'all women in here know what I'm talking about. You know what I'm talking about. Who are overlooked for a job, you should run. If you think that people should just get paid for their labor and what they're worth and what they sacrifice, you should run. And so that's my burning why. And I come from, as a second-generation legacy, from a man who was willing to give the shirt off his back for those who doesn't have. And so I think it's my honor, if you want to look any further, you can not only look to me as a, my legacy as a son of Detroit, but also my main man right here, Dennis Archer and his father, and what he sacrificed for this city to be what it is and where it is. And I know personally firsthand, and I'm not trying to say woe is me, I'm saying this to paint the picture of how many times my father went out and birthdays that weren't made, and field trips that weren't made, because he was willing to give the ultimate sacrifice so that people could have more, so that people could become what they were capable of, so they can achieve their best selves. And I can only imagine the stories that you had and the sacrifices that were made. Those casinos and stadiums didn't build themselves. Those houses didn't build themselves. Those neighborhoods didn't clean themselves. Those streets weren't safe by themselves. That's sacrifice. That's a legacy. And if you're willing to do that, if you want to put everything you have for the greater good for your constituency, you should run, and I look forward to see you out there on the trail. Thank you.
Well said. I want to thank the Detroit Regional Chamber for hosting this panel. I thought it was incredible. It was well-produced and you guys did an outstanding job.
Everything was good, man.
But more so, I do want to thank all five of you for your service, because I am familiar with the sacrifice, uh, the long hours, uh, the, definitely the underpayment and the sacrifices that you make on behalf of the citizens of Detroit. So thank you very much, and thank you all for being here.
Dennis, good job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.